Seven o'clock, I call the Neighborhood Board of Kailua meeting to order. We will start with a roll call. As you can all see, I am not Bill Hicks. So let's start roll call. Josiah Akau. Josiah present. Travis Council. Jeff Klein. Bill Hicks.
Present remotely.
Bill present remotely. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Lieha.
Here.
David present. Michael Lee.
Present remote.
Michael present remotely. Levani Lipton. Carol Miyashiro. Carol present. Kayala Morale. Kate Ryder.
Present remotely.
Kate's present remotely. Claudine Tomasa.
Present remotely.
Claudine present remotely. Steve Trecker. Evan Weber. Evan's present. Gary Weller.
Here.
Gary's present. John Wayne. Donna Wong. Donna is present. Jeff Zuckernick.
Present remotely.
Jeff present remotely. Jade Lau Chair, I am present. We have 12. And that is a quorum. All right. Do we have any announcements from the board? Online, any board members? Okay. Honolulu Police Department. HPD is out working. HFD, Honolulu Fire Department. They are present this evening in person.
Good evening, I'm Captain Pungilinan from Kailua Fire Station, and I'll be providing the report for October 2024. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov, under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. And now for the statistics for September 2024. Structure fires were zero. Wildland brush fires were zero. Nuisance fires, we had four. Cooking fires, one. And activated alarms where there was no fire, we had 10. Emergencies, we had 89 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, nine motor vehicle crashes or collisions, two mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous materials incidents. The fire safety tip for the month? Smoke alarms, make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, please visit fpw.org. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button. And lastly, replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding when tested. That completes the report, are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Donna?
Where were your mountain rescues?
I don't have that for you, but I can get that statistic for you for next.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Steve Trecker is present. Any questions from board members online? Any question from the public?
No, I don't have that information, but I can get that for you for next month's report.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, HFD.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kalahaila High School. Kalahaila High School is giving us an informative signs and trail and other recreational space initiative. As an alumni, I'm really proud to see you guys here.
Aloha, my name is Brittany Bochon, and this is Ms. Michaela Foppel. We're both teachers at Kalahaila High School. And first, we would like to say mahalo. Thank you for everyone allowing us to come here tonight and share about this initiative and the work we're doing at Kalahaila High School. But I'm going to turn it over to the kids, let them lead the way.
Hi, everyone, thank you for letting us be present at this board meeting. We would first like to introduce ourselves. I'm Arianne, I'm a sophomore at Kalahaila High School.
My name is Emmy, and I'm also a sophomore at Kalahaila.
My name is Gracie, and I'm a freshman at Kalahaila High School.
Hi. We are the student ambassadors at the Academy of Media Design at Kalahaila High School. This is our school's third year of being an academy. In the booklets we've provided you are the names of all the high schools in Hawaii that are part of the academy model. We have put a sticky note next to Kalahaila High School in case you want to learn more about our academy. The primary mission for this academy is to foster an authentic learning environment that provides industry-level certifications, advanced courses, and real-life, relevant opportunities for students to better prepare them for post-secondary education and future careers. Teachers and community members partner together collaboratively to instill pride and confidence in our students by focusing on personal growth and academic achievement. Our vision for graduates of the academy is for them to be innovators who are creative, confident, and connected to their communities. They will be prepared to be local contributors who are thankful for their beginnings and ready to navigate future. Now, that leads to why we are here today. Gracie will explain a bit about the project they've been looking at.
The main focus in Academy of Media Design is to make connections in our world with the content we are learning from school, from our Foundations of Creative Media class and our English class. In English class, we've been learning about survival. We've debated State Bill 2798 about whether hybrids should pay for their rescues, and we've also read Lord of the Flies and also read a form of text about why everyone should learn basic first aid. We've also brought up concerns with hazardous conditions in the environment, especially with younger people. We were tasked to create signs regarding these conditions in hopes of preventing injuries. We've learned that signs have been a great tool to prevent injuries and accidents, and along with this, we are hoping to receive some feedback on the signs that we have created today. We hope you consider this because it can greatly improve the well-being of our community.
In conclusion, if you are interested in learning more about the academy or joining our Parks and Board to help us come up with more projects similar to this one, please feel free to talk to me, Emmy, Ms. Michaela, or Ms. Bochon for more information. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Yeah. Aloha, Kako, my name's Evan Weber. First of all, I just wanted to say mahalo nui to all of you for coming here and for all your amazing work. These signs are awesome. I am the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, and so a lot of this kind of stuff is under our kuleana. And we've also been kind of wrestling with some of this stuff and thinking about different ways that we can provide additional signage at beach parks, at district parks, at trailheads that we may have kuleana or ability to interact with. And it would be great to connect with you all and both take in some of your ideas and inspiration, and then also share what we have been thinking about and working on. We're also thinking about some of these things that you have made signs for here, right? Our dynamic, like jellyfish, for example, different wind, weather, water conditions, pollution conditions that may affect health and safety. So how can we also create signs that are dynamic? Can we insert different things on different days? Can we have digital versions of the signs? So it'd be great to connect with you. There's overlapping agencies, there's now an Ocean Safety Division for the county as well. So yeah, I'd love to just offer my contact information to whoever is appropriate from your hui and take this forward.
Thank you, Evan. Anybody else from the board? Gary?
Testing. I compliment you on this. Kalahaila High School is at the end of my street, and it's in my district. And one of the things that we've had problems with as a Neighborhood Board is the Department of Health and the city and county of Honolulu posting signs on the beach whenever there's dangerous water, jellyfish. And they'll just put out one sign, brown water, or they'll put out two signs, and it's not enough for the public to really be warned about this type of situation. So I really like some of the designs or the signs you've done. And as you leave high school and enter into the workforce, maybe some of you will end up in some of these agencies, and you can tell them how important signs are. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Gary. David Lieha.
Again, I'll echo the other guys' comments. Thank you, folks, to come out here. It takes a lot of guts and commitment and time, but you're part. So thank you. But I also want to mention that if you get stung with a jellyfish on the beaches, we know we have the Portuguese manure a lot in Kailua, that the naupaka, the little white berry, is very effective as a short-term antiseptic or something that you could put on your wounds. So there is a natural and readily available resource there to help the beach goers deal with that situation.
Donna Wong.
Were you, the creation of these signs, is it for a project or you want to carry it through so that they can be used by the city and county on the beaches or on the trails?
The goal of this assignment was to prioritize our community and follow the the safety guidelines, so making an impact by also contributing what we're learning in school. So it is for the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So yeah, it's kind of serving two purposes. So yes, it is a project, having the kids trying to apply what they're learning in class. We've been looking at different texts and debating real-life things like the State Bill that I know didn't pass over the summer. But like applying the knowledge we've learned and creating something. And hopefully, from our creations, we are thinking maybe we can have some sort of collaboration with state agencies or city agencies, or even here at the Neighborhood Board, to get something out in the public, and the kids can see that the work they're doing can make a difference in the community, that their work is out there, they can see it and know they're playing a critical part, like Gracie mentioned, taking care of their community, right? Because that's part of our goal, is to malama. I'm sorry, malama. So, thank you.
And then, I'm Ms. Michaela, so I teach Foundations of Creative Media. So they just learned Photoshop. So this is their first Photoshop lesson that they did, and I partnered up with Ms. Bochon, she teaches English. And she was talking about survival skills and all of that, and I incorporated that into my Foundations of Creative Media. So all these signs are made on Photoshop, the kids' first time ever using it. So all the signs that you have and all the signs here. So yeah, just adding to that.
So there's a real-life issue that's been, everybody's heard about the brown water notices. You can follow it by Department of Health, and they let you know whenever there's a brown water spillage. And so you could maybe work with somehow with the DOH and say, okay, well, we have a couple of signs, or we're working on signs, or how can we help you? And so it's a real-life experience that you'd be able to put the signs out.
And I just want to add too, and part of our inspiration, we were looking at how this issue has been playing out in the community. And one of the big things that got us interested in it was we saw the signage that went up at Ulamana and how effective it has been over the last two years. We watched the Hawaii News Now story on it, and we realized that, yeah, this can make an impact, and it can save lives, especially here in our community. And especially, a lot of our kids have been talking too about the economic impacts, right, on our resources and our agencies, right, to always be doing these rescues, right? So talking about maybe a little bit of prevention can go a long way in helping our community in so many ways.
Thank you, thank you so much, Kalahaila.
Yeah.
In essence of wrapping up the 10-minute time and keeping us on a timeline this evening, I'd like to ask, are there any board members online that have questions or comments? Okay, any citizens in person? Online, Mr. Sakamoto, please remember their 10-minute timeline has expanded. If you can keep it brief.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. As a blind individual, graduate of Hopeful State Agency for a blind school, we learn braille, so I just wanted to know if we could incorporate some kind of braille on these signs so blind individuals like myself can understand what is being presented on the sign. That's all.
That, that would be, if for those that couldn't hear clearly, he's requesting that we follow through and include or incorporate braille usage on the signs as well. So food-for-thought students, something to expand what you've already started. I would first like to thank you all for coming. As it's already been said, it takes a lot of guts to stand up there and speak your piece. So you did an amazing job, I applaud you. Also, I'd like to note that we have both our city representative and our state representative in the House, and I would highly encourage all of you to speak, to carry this work through because signage is always something that we need. All right, thank you. Moving along, our local agency reports. Reminding you again, your agency reports are limited to three minutes. Board of Water Supply, Danny, are you with us?
Hi, good evening. Hey, so I have a message from the Board of Water for this month's meeting. I have no record of rain breaks for September. And the water announcement for the month is the Board of Water has launched its annual 2025, well, this year's annual 2025 Poster and Poetry Contest. The poster contest is open for kids grades kindergarten through six. The poetry contest is open for children grades seven through 12. And the theme of this year's contest is the worth of Y. Y, vi, V, WAI, and its value. The deadline to enter is February 28th, and I believe all the applicants receive a prize. For more information, please visit boardofwatersupply.com. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Anybody from the board have questions for Danny? Anybody online of the board have questions for Danny? Any citizens in the House? Any citizens online? Thank you very much, Danny, we always appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you, good night.
Marine Corps Base Hawaii, do you have a representative in person or online? Okay. As we move on now, resident and community concerns. I'd like to invite our residents in our community to use this opportunity to speak to us directly. Please note, you'll need to use the microphone so it can be heard online as well. And you have a three-minute time. Go.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Kailua Board. My name is Jazzy Rosa, and I've lived on Kuhukama Street for 44 years, from 1980 until present. And the reason I'm here this evening is that I'm very concerned about the situation with the traffic, not only on our street, on Kuhukama Street, but also through the entire region of Kualae, including Kuhukalei and Kuhukoa. And so I have a few points that I want to raise, and the board could ask me questions when I'm finished. Here's the problem. The street traffic, especially on Kuhukama, because it's a long straight street, there's excessive traffic amount, there's excessive speeding, there's excessive noise, and it's going on 24/7 because of the problems with the Kalapaua, the roundabout. And so one difficulty is that, for whatever the reason is, the unloaded Department of Transportation and the Honolulu Police Department has refused to enforce our 15 mile an hour speed limit. In many cases, during the evening especially, we have vehicles running up and down our street going 30, 40 miles an hour. And so it's very disturbing, and the noise that people make in their, running their boomboxes, we can't enjoy living in our homes. I've lived there for a handful of years, less than half a century, and this is the absolute worst that I've ever seen it on our street. I have a small point that I'll raise lastly, and I have two other points that are important. Since the Makai-bound traffic on our streets going through Kuhukoa, Kuhukalei, and Kuhukama, there's no access to Kailua Beach. So my question is, both to this, to the board and for Kelly Burdick and for the people to raise, the Neighborhood Board to raise with Honolulu DOT, why is there no sign at the Mauna Kea End on Kanalu Boulevard? Why is there no sign that says, no beach access, no Lanikai access? And essentially, it should be only for local residents, because you drive Makai on our streets, you can't go to Lanikai or Kailua Beach, the road's closed. Thirdly, as a Kualae resident, especially at nighttime, there is more or less unrestricted traffic that's very noisy. So there's motorcycles, motorbikes, people speeding, people making loud noises. And unfortunately for us residents, it's almost impossible for us to enjoy living in our residence. As I said, I've lived there a handful of years, less than half a century, and this is the absolute worst that I've ever seen. So I want this board, including whoever's going to run the railroads, yourself, Chairman Lau, you need to get a hold of the head of the Department of Transportation, you need to talk to the mayor, and you need to raise these points because we're reaching the end, we're reaching the end of our rope. I mean, this, this is, it's absurd for a small project like this to take two years. And last.
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Yeah.
And I did want to let you know that Department of Transportation Services will be giving us an update as part of the governor's briefing. Any others, any other citizens?
Hello, my name is Kip Bunton, I also live on Kuhukama, and it's, I would, I would second his comments. The, the traffic is literally bumper to bumper from the place where you turn all the way down to Kainalu Road. And when it's not bumper to bumper, people are passing each other, taking out, you know, taking out signs, street signs. Our 15 mile an hour sign was knocked down just the other day, and we would like that to be repaired, that could be annotated. And then there's just a number of, you know, when two cars have to pass each other, they're going on the grass so they can pass each other. So all those laws are being torn up. So thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you.
Aloha. My name's Andreas Halkinger, I also live on Kuhukama Street. I don't need to bore the board anymore with any of the complaints that you've heard. We've got plenty of kapuna that live on this street. One neighbor in particular, she's afraid to get her mail because her mailbox has been run over twice now in the last two years. Another neighbor had his mailbox run over around 9:00 PM in the evening by a likely drunk driver. But we won't know because he wasn't field sobriety tested. Back in May, Ms. Kelly Akasaki, who I know is on the line now and hasn't responded to any of the complaints or the emails that I've sent, to include many of you here on this chamber, many of the mayors representatives, and anyone that I could think of to include in the Department of Transportation Services, to include Roger Moore, as well as John Nouchi and Kelly Akasaki herself. But she presented here in May of this year. Less than one month later, that progress was then immediately changed, and they took a two-month hiatus. They have now, very most recently, updated the Kalapaua Project website to say that the project would be ending in May of next year, a project that was, that was contracted for two years and $7.8 million. The problem, the way that I see it, is that this construction was meant to have ended last month, actually, now two months ago, in August. The contract period was meant to end in December of this year. It is now extending into May and likely will continue much into the future. They've now decided that phases five and seven will continue concurrently, which is now causing the tremendous amount of traffic that we now see on Kuhukama. As Ms. Lau said two years ago, there's children traversing that street constantly, going to either K, Est, Ka'ahau, for the many geographic exceptions that now exist for the kids that need to go to that school. What are we doing? What is the role of this chamber? What is the role of our own government if we can't hold our companies to the contracts that they end up getting paid a king's ransom to perform? What is it that we're doing? How many times must I come here to complain to a mostly empty chamber where nothing gets done? It's contemptible. I hope you all feel this. You know, how many times do people just come to these things one time and they never come back because they say, why does it even matter? Why do I even complain? I don't have some of your emails because your personal emails or whatever emails that you want to put onto this thing, and I'll finish here shortly, are not available for public comment. Please, look at the Neighborhood Board. And actually, more than that, please actually do something to hold these companies accountable. I'm asking. Actually, I'm begging at this point. Because you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution.
David.
Thank you. I've definitely heard you speak before several times, and we do get the same message about delays. We do know that the delays were primarily attributable to the finding of bones, EV.
Yeah, the EV kapuna, 61 days is what the project says.
Yes. I'm not using that as an excuse or anything, but I'm just sharing with you my understanding of what the, what the cause for the delays are.
David.
Yes, I'm very aware, that was in the, that was in the project.
Excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen, if I can interrupt for a moment. Let's remember DTS is present, and DTS will speak to this. Let's remember DTS is present, and DTS will speak to this. So rather than us speculating or trying to remember, let's let DTS address their issues. I do have one question. Are the stanchions still up on Kalahaeo to avoid that left-hand turn?
So those stanchions got removed by someone or maybe the contractors, I'm unaware. But since now it's moved into phase seven, they've changed that flow altogether, and the left-hand turn on Kalahaeo coming from Lani Kai is now allowed and permissible. So you now can make a left-hand turn onto Kalahaeo, onto Kuhukama. You also can make the right-hand turn from Kalahaeo onto Kuhukama.
Before I get myself in trouble with what I just said, does anybody else have anything to add to this, or are we going to allow DTS to address it after the governor's message? Is it pertinent, Dave?
I just wanted to, just a follow-up comment. You're asking about what is this quorum for, what is this group for, if not to address the key issues that you're raising? And I think part of it is that we are conveners. We're here with our legislators, we're here with the Department of Transportation. We're allowing you some time, and we're going to give them time to talk. So that's the purpose of this organization, is to allow for that conversation to take place so the issues that you folks are raising get, get at least some, some airtime and in, and some awareness into the community. And so that, that's the primary purpose. We aren't able to have any legislative authority or anything in that regard, but we can certainly bring the things that you folks are bringing up to the attention of the legislators, Department of Transportation, and others that are involved. And we, many of us share the same, same concerns that you raise, but we have limitations on what we are able to do as well.
I appreciate that, but I do not feel the same.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move on. Are there any other, I, I want you to know you are definitely heard. I am one of your strongest supporters in this, but I really feel we need to let DTS address your concerns directly. It is their Kooliana and their place. They are giving us a full report as part of the governor's message. So is there any other community concerns at this point?
Sorry, Jade, just want to clarification. DTS is county, right? So is that part of?
They have a presentation to, to include, so we're putting them under the governor's report.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Wait, wait. State DOT is going after the governor. DTS has a presentation that they'll be doing as well.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you all for the clarification. For the mayor. Okay, perfect. So Kelly is able to speak in the mayor's report representing city and county for the roundabout to give us some kind of?
Which is next on the agenda.
Thank you all for the support. Being chair is a whole lot harder than I ever expected it to be. So, thank you, sir. It's your turn.
Thank you. My name's Stephen DiCosta, lifetime resident of Kailua. My concerns is, I've been running and jogging in Kailua for the last fifty-some years, and I've noticed the conditions of our crosswalks. It's either been faded or it's not, it's been unkept. I mean, you know, painted and done. You start in the middle of Kailua town with the big banyan tree, you go north, south, east or west, and those crosswalks are totally not kept up. So I was wondering if the city, the city or state can put some paint or maintenance or something on there. They started with the crosswalks at Uluni and Oniava, that intersection over there. But if you go to our big intersection out here, it's totally faded, you know? And it, I hope that, I don't want, I brought this up so somebody doesn't get hit or run over in a crosswalk that you cannot see while you're driving. But it's been like that for several, it's been like that for a while. But also, you know, Kuhukama Street, they put four speed bumps. Beautiful job, but I live on Marlo Neil, and they've been, they've been dragging down that, drag racing down that street for the last fifty years. So if we could look into it and put some speed bumps without crosswalks on the speed bumps, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but just speed bumps along the way on Marlo Neil, and they've been racing down there for fifty years, I would appreciate it, before somebody gets seriously hurt or something. But the crosswalks in Kailua is, has to be looked into.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Designating, we have both city and state representing tonight. So I see you both nodding your heads, taking notes that we're looking at all the crosswalks, starting from the center of Kailua Town, our major intersection of the Kailua Road, Koolaua Road, and Oniava. That intersection is horrible, the crosswalks. Thank you. Anybody on the board? Ms. Donna?
Can, can we also include, first of all, put this, this should go to Travis's committee, that the condition of the crosswalks and the lines coming down the center that divide the two-lane highway. You can't see them anymore. So it'd be the same thing, Sophie, can have him look at both of those?
Thank you, Donna. Carol?
And can I add both of your concerns, but all of the concerns expressed by the community? There is a transportation committee that meets the second Thursday of every month at seven forty-five to eight thirty. And it's been my experience that in these bigger forums, it's more like a presentation and kind of taking the information, but that's actually where discussion occurs. And so the speed bumps that occurred on Kuhukama was a large part because residents at that street came for many, many meetings, and there was, you know, kind of collaboration and the ability to really talk in detail and come up with some plans to address those concerns a little bit more, you know, actively, proactively. So if you have the ability, send some representatives to the transportation committee meetings. They're small, and there's a lot of opportunity for actual discussion and problem solving. Thank you. It's the second Thursday of every month, so it will be next Thursday, and they meet at seven forty-five to eight thirty. Oh, I'm sorry. It's also in the district park, but it's in the, if you go in the main entrance.
It's in the gymnasium meeting room.
Okay, yeah, it's more inside. Correct, yes.
Any board members online? Any citizens? Anybody online? Okay, moving along. Thank you, first of all, for coming out and speaking. It is very helpful when our citizens bring things to our attention. Next up, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative.
Hi, everyone. Shane Enright here for Director Jim Ireland, on behalf of Mayor Blangiardi. And I do have an extensive report, more extensive than usual, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. So please let me know if you have any questions. I hope you all did receive the mayor's newsletter. You get the opportunity to look at it because I'm, have a bunch of teases. The first is being an update on the operations and ongoing construction for A Wahoo's rail transit system. The second being the city officially unveiled its Ala Respite, the newest facility aimed at addressing homelessness, and this is right next to Ala Park and Core, which you've heard me speak about for our homeless outreach, does bring homeless individuals here to get medical aid. And so far, it's been very well received. Honolulu ME's office, the medical examiner, they're upgraded their facility down, I believe, in the Evil Lake area. For the second time, and I love this one, in the last thirteen months, the city opened a new lifeguard tower, and I hope you all know where that is, over at Kuhukama Beach Park. We had a nice blessing, and it's made a big impact already, so I hope you guys have been able to check that out. And also in that newsletter, there's an update on the renovations at the Waikiki Shell, including when the facility will reopen to the public. From A and B, sewer service charges. The city's Department of Environmental Services plans to increase its sewer service charges for all residential and commercial customers in fiscal year 2026, which does begin July first, 2025. Sorry. A and B wishes to present more information, so they are going to try to come out to all the neighborhood boards. Please contact either Roger Babcock or Mike O'Keefe. I have emails and I have phone numbers, Chair, instead of just giving those out right now, which might be hard to write down. I can get those to you in an email if that works better for you. Next, from Department of Land and Management, an update on the seven-three-four to seven-three-five Kihaapi Place. Last fall, reported to this neighborhood board, the city acquired the vacant parcels located at that location for future affordable housing development. In January of this year, DLM issued a request for proposals seeking a developer for the project. Multiple proposals were received, and a selection committee selected a potential developer. DLM is currently negotiating a contract, ground lease, and other related documents with the selected developer. Doesn't look like the developer's name was included here. In the coming months, the selected developer will begin surveys, studies, and other exploratory work on the property as part of its due diligence process. At the conclusion of such negotiations, the developer will be announced. There we go. And the documents will be presented to city and county, city council for approval. If negotiations with the selected developer are unsuccessful or cannot be completed in a reasonable period of time, the city will terminate negotiations with the selected developer and start negotiations with the next highest-scoring developer. Please, Chair, Board, let us know if you have any questions on that. And as far as community concerns that were brought up last week, I do have one response from Department of Transportation. It was about the stoplight on Alikee Street and Koolaua Road. There was the question on when that would be installed. DTS is working on it. They say contracting out to the construction management, and they believe completion of this signal will be done by late 2025, late next year. That's all I have for the mayor. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Bill, I'm in Gary Weller.
I don't know if everyone's aware, but I was kind of vindicated. Jim Ireland attended as the first, first responder to an accident on the Quarry Road about a week ago, where a car could not see the streams on the side because of the high vegetation, and the car flipped over, and Jim was the first one to arrive. And he sent an email to Bill saying that his only thoughts at the time was that this is what Gary Weller's been talking about for years. Jeff Zuckerman also sent me an email about it. But once again, I went there just two days ago, and nothing has been done. And the grass entering into the industrial park where all the big trucks come out, that's so high now that a truck driver cannot see when he's approaching the street to get out of there. So I don't know, do we have to wait until people are dead to get this done? Because I've been talking about it since I've been on this board. But, you know, that accident that happened, nobody got hurt, but they could have been hurt. Thank you.
Donna Wong.
Yes, when the mayor was here for his town hall, I talked with Mr. Babcock about the lights that shine across Kauai Nui Marsh from the transfer station. There's about four, four bright lights that are driving up the pully. You can see, they shine all the way across the marsh. That's a shorebird flight pattern, and that should not be happening. I've sent several emails, and I have not heard back. So I would like some response. Mr. Babcock at that meeting said he would look into it, and I haven't heard anything. And there's got to be some way to shield those lights from shining across the marsh.
Excuse me, Donna, can you, Donna, we didn't, we misunderstood or didn't hear over here. Where exactly are the light?
The transfer station.
The transfer station. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, when they remodeled the, when they remodeled the transfer station, the new lights they put in, you know, they're hanging from the ceiling. And the wall that faces the marsh for aerating the building to get the smell out of it, the siding of the building is a sheet of metal, then like a foot or two space. And really, all they would have to do is readjust the lights either up or down so they don't beam through the area that there's no metal. Or they could put shields on the light, like Hawaiian Electric does when somebody complains about the light coming into their house. But Donna's exactly correct. You can see the transfer station all the way from Kailua Town.
Understood. Thank you. Anybody else from the board? Any board member online? Any citizens in person? Anybody online? Okay, thank you, Shane. If you could just make note of the crosswalk issue and paint, that would be helpful.
Definitely. Understood, got it. Thank you all. Take care.
Yes, Kelly. I see Kelly had her hand raised. Yes, Kelly?
Yeah, yep. So I'll take this time to give the update about the Kalapaua Project. So Mr. Helchinger was not wrong. In the end of May, we finished a part of phase four, which was right in front of Kailua Road. We were going to start phase five, which is what we are in now, which would shut down the corner of Kalahaeo and Kailua Road, including the left turns into the roundabout. At that time, A and B Hawaii and the tenants and the vendors in the beach center asked us if we could take a pause during the summer. Their main reason was the summertime was their busiest time. They are already looking at maybe a twenty percent decrease due to the construction project. And they said that the summer, if we were to continue and not allow that left turn, that some of the businesses would go out of business, as forty percent of their sales annually are made in the summer. So the city made the agreement that we would shut down June and July. August first, we started again, as we promised the A and B people, as well as the community, that we were going to start again and that we wouldn't put the project on hold anything before July. As of then, we did do a waterline connection that went all the way across Kailua Road, which is why Kailua Road into Lani Kai was closed. The waterline there needed to be relocated so we can continue on with the drainage project, which is what we are in now. If the waterline was not relocated, we could not proceed with the rest of the project. So that's why the majority of August, the two lanes were closed. Now we are working in phase five, which also includes drainage to the giant catch basin that's under the tree now. And we figured that if we close phase five, we should do phase seven to kind of coordinate the work and keep the two phases shorter. So after this phase, we move on to phase six, which will be around the middle of November. And again, all of this is pending that we don't find any other EV, we don't find any other utility conflicts. So far, with most of their dredging that we've done in the last month or so, we have not found any discrepancies or utility issues.
Thank you, Kelly. I have a question.
Yes.
My understanding and recollection is, when we were talking about detours through the community, that at that point in time, it was said that we were all in agreement, the citizens, DTS, the neighborhood board, that we wanted to go with arterial streets, which meant the detour would come straight down Koolaua, all the way to Kalahaeo, make the right-hand turn on Kalahaeo into Lani Kai. Coming out of Lani Kai, we had the stanchions to block the left-hand turn to deter the cut-through of Koolaua Track and continued that detour back to Koolaua Road and out of Kailua through arterial streets. So my question is, one, what happened to the stanchions? Two, why are there detour signs on Kainal Drive when they're supposed to go straight? There should be no signage for detour. And three, we were told we can't do neighborhood-only, resident-only signs because DTS doesn't do that anymore. But yet, in Kalihii, there is a street closed currently with a neighborhood resident-only sign. In Hawaii Kai, there is a current resident-only DTS sign. So what's the story now, Kelly? Why can't we put a resident-only sign on Koolukama? The residents deserve it, the students deserve it. We have children, as has been brought up before. That is the designated safe street to school. It's a wide street. We tell our children that's the road to use. Now, we tell our kids that's roads to use, that we also tell our tourists that's roads to use. We also tell our bus that's the road to use. We tell every dang Uber driver out there, DoorDash, everybody, that is not appropriate. So can we address this?
Can I answer your questions?
Absolutely, thank you.
So when we did start Phase Five, there should be two message boards, one coming out of buses into the shopping, into the beach center that says to use Kooloe Road. There should be one on Kalahaleo Road prior to Kooloe Road to you, to say to use Kooloe Road. The detour should all say to use Kooloe Road. As for the stanchions that were put up on Koolukama, we have replaced them many times. Someone is coming out with a saw and is literally cutting them down. So the more we go out to replace them, they are cut down within the week. So it's not a contractor's issue, it's the residents in the area who have taken it upon themselves that no matter what we put up, they will cut it down and they will still use the detours. So we do have the signs put up at Koolukama. The answer to your Kalihii and Hawaii Kai ones, if the roadway is closed only during working hours, 8:30 to 3:30, I can have a police officer there, I can have a flagman there to open up the lane and only allow for residents. But this closure is 24/7. So I don't have someone there to allow to open for Koolukama and Koonui maybe at 10 o'clock at night. So we put up the signs that we can, and we still try and detour them onto Kooloe. So we are trying our end to put away more signage. If there's any other issues that you think we need more signage, I'm all for that. The message boards are up there. We've asked HPD to help assist us. The transfer did change over last week, Thursday, which was our biggest complaint day. Friday, the next day, it kind of backs up in the afternoon is what we noticed. But majority of the people kind of detoured after that to follow the detours. The hard part is this project is so long that people kind of ignore the detour because they don't know when the phases change. So on our end, and we've agreed to do a little more outreach that when any phase change happens, we will put out a press release. We will let the neighborhood boards know, and we will go that route so that the weeks or one or two weeks before we actually do the phase change, we'll put it out there all over the news, we'll put it out there in the press release. So that was our fault, that Phase Five changed over last week, Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one, one small correction before I move on to Bill, and that is I'm willing to bet it's not the residents that are cutting down those stanchions, it's vagrants. And that would be a call to HPD to maybe be more present because we know there is vagrant activity happening. Again, I'm pretty positive it's not the residents.
It's not the residents that live on Koolukama. So what we've been, we've been asking is to kind of follow those who do make the left turns out and they're heading into Enchanted Lake. So that's the shortest route for them to get to Wanau, to Kailua. So it's residents of Kailua, maybe not residents of Kooloe Track.
Bill, your turn, Bill.
Thank you very much. This is the first that I'd heard that potentially Kailua residents are cutting down these plastic stanchions. I am so dismayed to hear that, and I'd be so disappointed if it's Kailua residents. Let me offer a suggestion, though. Don't replace the plastic stanchions. Instead, please put down one of the portable concrete barriers instead of the plastic stanchions. You, you, you know those concrete barriers that can be lifted in place? Just put that there, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any other board members? Evan.
Yeah, mahalo, Kelly. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify and confirm. So for the Kalapaua Roundabout Project, you believe that you are still on track for the May 2025 now?
So I have told the contractor, we are finishing in May of next year. I am not going to stop again for two months for the businesses next summer. So whatever it takes to finish the project by May so that I don't have another stoppage in the summer because of the businesses out there. So
Okay.
Since we're going to work longer hours, if it means double crews, if it means weekends, our contractor is aware of that.
Well, we really appreciate that, and much of Kailua obviously has been impacted by this project. And we know it ultimately is for our benefit, not just as people who have to deal with the increased tourism traffic, but also the many benefits that it will bring to our water and the many improvements that you guys have made, a shorewater runoff there and the streets as well. So I just did want to reiterate from the city and county to borrow the phrase that I just was using, I'm not one to hold their water. And in fact, if you attend these meetings, you know that I will regularly harangue them for the fact that, you know, there are certain basic things like soap dispensers, for example, that they have not been able to provide for us. And it really does diminish the public's trust in the city and county when they can't do basic things. But that said, the reason for the delays was two months for EV, and then this three-month stoppage, right, on behalf of the local businesses, all of which I know as a longtime lifetime resident are critical businesses to our community, and we do want to see them survive. So as a neighborhood board, it is not to start Kualana to look after the interests of one residential street, but of all of Kailua. And that includes Kooluneo Street, which the traffic was diverted to when it was diverted off of Koolukama Street after, after your guys' request that we did listen to and work with the city agencies to achieve, as well as, of course, our local businesses, who I think we all want to see, you know, stick around, as well as Tori B. Kapuna, which are the first and lineal descendants of this place, Kailua. So that is the rationale, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you, Evan. I believe one of the Koolukama residents had a question for you.
Hi, Kelly, I have a question for you as regards to what was a comment about the direction of flow of, of vehicle traffic through the period of the Kalapaua Roundabout. I wondered, is there a bona fide reason why people that are heading from Kailua Beach and from Lani Kai in the evenings, between, say, sunrise at 6:00 AM and dinnertime around 7:00 PM, is there a reason why there could, there should not be a no, a no left turn on Kalahaleo going up Maka Bound on Koolukama and Kooluneo? Send the people at nighttime, because there's so much traffic and so much noise and so much speeding, send them up to, send them up to Kooloe and Kalahaleo and let them go around. Why can't they do that?
Sir, I believe that is, that is the plan, and that is what they are trying to do.
Yes.
So that's, that's why we're saying, that's why Mr. Hicks suggested, rather than the stanchions, to go with the concrete so that it forces that as a straightaway and directs the traffic to Kooloe. That, am I understanding you correctly, that that is the plan? Is to send the traffic to the arterial street?
Concrete barriers. What we are considering is maybe water barriers. Only because concrete barriers without the appropriate room, it could be more of a hazard if a car were to hit it head-on. Where the water barriers give a little so that if someone were to hit it, it's filled with water and it won't be a serious injury. So that is something that we are looking at. Because like I said, if you, if we put up the delineators, the plastic ones, it looks like someone came out with a handsaw and just literally cut them straight down. And it's not one, it's all of them.
So Kelly, just to, just to reiterate, just to reiterate, regardless of what is selected, the plan is to get the traffic to Kooloe and out of the residential neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay, we are all on the same page. Mark our calendars, we are all on the same page. Thank you so much for your time.
We have also tried to reach out to Google. So at one point, we reached out to Google and asked them to take Koolukama off the street as, as completely closed. I think they put it back on a few months ago. It could be because we weren't doing the project and people were saying that it was open. But we have been reaching out to Google also to get them to still show it as closed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. One minute, because we got to move on.
Just one thing I wanted to add for Kelly Akasaki's benefit when dealing with the contractor is I go by there every day, as many Lani Kai residents do and other residents, not just the residents of Koolukama. And I understand that we work with all of those, but I've yet to see any of the businesses show up here, and I've come to most of these. That being said, when I go out there, I oftentimes do not see any workers present, like today, for example, all day, not a single present. Yesterday, we had maybe three people there total, maybe four. There seems to be a certain lack of a sense of urgency, maybe even complacency, because they know that they're going to get paid anyway. So if you would like to use this in your negotiation, apparently with the contractor, please let them know that everyone that drives by there recognizes that, you know, there are times when they're there and they operate, but I don't want to have to go into every time that I've had a neighbor tell me, hey, I've lived in Japan, this would be done by now. I've lived in Florida, this would be done by now. I've lived in Washington State, this would be done by now. I've lived in Germany, Italy, any number of places. This would be done by now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. All right. One more.
Do we, hello, thank you for coming tonight. Do we give incentives to contractors to finish early?
Contractors always want to finish early because then they have a better profit on their end to start another project. So each time the state shuts us down to, because of the Evi Kapuna, or the city asked them to shut down during the summer because of the businesses, they are hurting as well. So for them, it, it's not benefit because they have to find something for their staff to do for two months while they're not doing anything here. So they had to move their crew actually to another island just to get work until we allowed them to start again in August. So they are not making any more money by having us stop them, and they want to get out as quickly as possible.
To, to your knowledge, in Honolulu, have we ever, ever finished a project on time and within budget? Because, I mean, we are famous across the United States. The Golden Gate Bridge was built in less days than the Wahihua Suspension Bridge.
Our hardest thing that we find is the utilities. So I can follow any map that you send me out there, whether the water lines are supposed to be, where the gas lines are supposed to be, where the electrical lines are supposed to be. Once I dig in the road, I find five or six new lines that are on no plans at all, which means I need to go back to the utilities and find out what I can do with it. Can I relocate it? Can I move it? I need plans all redone again. I mean, that is one of the biggest problems island-wide, is that we don't have a good as-built for all the utilities that are out there.
Again, thank you so much, Kelly. All right, moving on. Governor Josh Green's representative, hi, Ms. Aaron.
Good evening. We have governor's newsletter today at the table, and it was also provided in the Google documents. And then just one short response from a question last week. There was a question, I believe, from Travis regarding the paving schedule for Kailua Road. This is a DOT question from Castle Hospital to Kailua Town. HDOT anticipates repaving Kailua Road Kalaniana Ole to Hamakua Drive in 2025. HDOT team will be visiting the site in the next couple of weeks and complete a scoping report and draft the schedule by the end of October. We'll provide an update to the neighborhood board for the November meeting on the timing of the repaving from Castle Hospital, oh, yeah, Castle Hospital to Hamakua Drive. So we do have DOT online. There were some additional questions emailed to us from the last month. So Lee is here to answer those, but I will take questions now before I turn it over to Lee to answer additional questions for DOT.
Anybody on the board? Any board members online? Any citizens present? Anybody online? All right, Erin, we're ready for DOT.
Okay, so we'll have Lee come online, and she can address the questions that were asked via email to her. Or the department.
Thank you, Erin, hi. Good evening, board members, really appreciate it. Thank you for having me here. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, leave me here perfectly.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, before I, I respond to Travis's question, I did want to provide some statistics on, you know, the major, the traffic fatalities happening across our state. As of today, there have been 75 motor vehicle fatalities. And, and that is just 75 too many. Of those in this 39, or I'm sorry, 36 occurred in the city and county of Honolulu. Nine were motor vehicle fatalities, 12 were pedestrians, 11 were motorcycle or moped, and four were bicycle. So we just please want to remind everyone to slow down, to not drive impaired or let friends or family drive impaired, and to always wear your seatbelt. And let's see, regarding Travis's questions about the RRVs, what's happening on Kailua Road intersection improvements in the vicinity of Ululua Street and Ulu Manu Drive project? That'll start next week, October 7th. And that will, project will install two traffic signals that were requested by the Kailua Neighborhood Board. One signal, this is many years ago, apparently, before I started. One signal at the Ulu Noah Street intersection and one signal at the Ulu Manu Drive intersection. When the traffic signals are activated, the two raised crosswalks currently there will be removed. The anticipated signal activation and removal of the raised crosswalks is anticipated for May 25. Sorry, that was the question I had from Travis. And I will take back to the, the operations team to please take a look at the striping and the centerline paint for our facilities in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any additional questions? Evan.
Yeah, mahalo for attending today. A number of constituents have been asking me about the proposed Roundabout Project at Mokapu, and we have, it has not been brought before the Kailua Neighborhood Board. It's something that I would first start off with, and it deeply impacts Kailua. Gary just informed me that it has been brought before the Kaneohe Neighborhood Board, which apparently I, maybe the state thought was sufficient. I don't know if that's a state or county responsibility, but if it is a county, I apologize for not bringing it up a couple minutes ago. Mokapu and Kalahaleo.
Mo, Mokapu and Kalahale, that's a county thing? Okay, so it's a county question. I'll wrap it up real quick and you can, we can, Jade can tell me what will happen with my question. Um, but I think where it wraps between city and state is even though that uh Kalapuai Roundabout has been really frustrating for me as a resident who's had to deal with it all the time. I understand the rationale for it and I understand how it would improve traffic and conditions. I do not understand the rationale for this um Mokapu Roundabout or the prioritization of it compared to the bajillion complete streets proposals that I have from the state, um, which are bikes and safety and all these things that are gonna protect our keiki and all that sorts of stuff. I've never had speed or safety issues at that intersection and none of the constituents that have been coming to me with questions about this have had those issues either.
Evan, I, thank you for bringing that up now that we know it's a city issue, a city and county issue.
That's done, I'm, I'm pal.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, we can move that back to the mayor's office at some point, Shane, if you're still on there. Um, there are questions from board members, Mr. Hicks.
Uh, mahalo Chair, I, I think you've clarified it, but uh, but I'll amplify slightly. It has come to the neighborhood board. It's a city and county of Honolulu complete streets proposal. It's down the road. And uh, since we have a complete streets presentation tonight uh from Renee, just hold that question uh uh for the end of her presentation.
Thanks, Bill, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Bill. We have a question from Ms. Carol Abe, Carol? Hello, Carol? Okay, we're going to move on. We have our elected officials reports. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that order is randomly selected. And elected officials, please try and keep two or three minutes if possible. We'll start off with Councilmember Esther Kiaaina.
Good evening, everyone, I'm gonna actually uh time myself as well, I have a lot of things to say, so I'm gonna talk fast, okay? Uh, Gloria from my office is online. A lot of the information I'm talking about is gonna be inserted into the chat box. First of all, Bill 64 relating to land use ordinance is coming to closure in that I'm finally gonna move it out of committee on October 22nd. So anyone who's been following this bill, please, 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 go to our website and it's gonna be dropped in the box, honolulucitycouncil.org backslash Bill 64. Um, and so the next hearing again is October 22nd. On October um 22nd, I will also be considering another resolution that I introduced. A lot of people interested in agriculture has been calling for the reestablishment of the city council's agricultural development task force. I'm not expecting any problems, but it's something that I believe uh those who care about agriculture would be supportive of. Charter amendments relating to Ocean Safety Commission caps on council member salaries. Climate Resiliency Fund, Department of Ed, uh Emergency Management, those are the four questions. Gloria is inserting in the box um an info sheet on that. If anybody has any questions, uh please contact my office. Uh, Bill 46 is moving, it is a priority for the city council, it relates to an empty homes tax. My concern is that it doesn't um, it doesn't impact local families on a multitude of fronts. We have legal short-term rentals, I believe long-term rental uh rentals should uh be exempted. And there's a lot of families who also have second homes, they were not our target. Our target would be those investors who are here, whose primary residence is not here. And um they are not utilizing their empty homes. Bill 44 relating to speed limits, thank you for taking uh action today. It will decrease the speed limit around the school zones from twenty-five to twenty miles per hour. Um, the Department of Facility Maintenance, I know it's of, of uh priority concern for the neighborhood board. They have uh selected certain residential and commercial streets in Kailua with regard to street sweeping. Uh Gloria is putting all of the streets uh in the chat box. What you're talking about, Keola Drive, Anakumu Street, Kainehe Street, Po'olai Street, Alike Street, Malonio Avenue, Kiha'api Street, Kailua Road, Koolaua Road, Hamakua Street. So there's gonna be a schedule and it's gonna be, parking restrictions will be enforced. Lastly, uh, the grants and aid uh deadline is going to be November 22nd. And uh, so anybody's interested, please contact me. I do plan on holding a town hall meeting uh because I do know a lot of neighborhood boards want it. But because there's so many, I'm asking for a Winburg Town Hall on the process to walk people through it. The maximum amount is a hundred fifty thousand dollars, thank you so much.
Thank you, Esther. Donna?
Um, jeez, I just forgot, I just forgot my clip.
Any other board members have questions for Esther?
I remember what, I remember what it was. Okay, your vacant home, your vacant homes tax? I, you said if it's a long-term rental that they shouldn't be taxed?
Uh, no, uh, they should be exempted. Uh, we have bills, uh Chair Waters and I have bills to incentivize uh those homeowners who either dedicate their um property to long-term rentals uh for twelve months or more. Uh, they should be exempted from this. Again, I know for, uh, I didn't get my amendments passed, I'm gonna fight for it in the second budget hearing. I believe that the empty homes tax should not be impacting local families. So I looked at all of the local concerns, mostly from people here in Kailua. And I itemized it and um I will oppose this bill if it adversely impacts local families.
How would it impose, eh, eh, how would it affect local families?
Uh, because uh, local families, some have, uh, for example, another home, right? Another home that they don't want rented or anything, so one of my amendments is going to be to uh allow one exemption for those who are local residents. I believe uh legal short-term rentals uh should be exempted. That was not the intent of the empty homes tax. Third, I believe that people who rent their homes, this is normally rez A categories. Those who have another home who rented out for twelve months or more should be exempted because the idea is to utilize all tools to provide housing for local families. So that, I just wanna let you guys know what's gonna happen, but it is a priority, everybody agrees with it. I also disagree, I uh with the funding allocation, I believe it should go back into the general fund. And um, that is something that we're gonna have a debate on at the next hearing.
David?
Uh, yes, thanks Esther, um, just to help, the, can you clarify for us Bill 64? Um, the land use ordinance, what, what that was to entail? And then regarding the agriculture, eh, I think you said that it was to establish another task force to study agriculture and the need to grow and all the, the, really, we're trying to get to the point where we're actually doing something for agriculture.
That's correct.
So um, can you share with us what the bill will do to actually?
The bill is a major overhaul and for the last two years, I've been um looking at various uses and uh including residential uses, public civic and institutional uses, commercial uses and industrial uses. Most recently, I just completed agricultural uses. On October 22nd, I'm gonna wrap up miscellaneous uses. Let, allow technical changes for all of the uses I've just covered and I'm gonna move the bill out of committee. It is my intention, if all goes well, to get this done before the ending of the year. It is uh, it should not have taken this long for the city to have updated its land use ordinance and um uh, I, as, if you have not been following, one of, there were a lot of people concerned about the agricultural part, especially um the uh, for, for honey, the honey growers. There's uh small growers in the backyard and those who have big uh, uh, big operations and I addressed them. So I guess I just wanna put everybody on notice uh because it is a big bill. I don't want anyone to think that um I'm just trying to ramrod this through. I've had two years of hearings and um, Congress, I mean Congressman, uh Councilmember Elefante also had it. The difference is that when he moved his measure, he moved it comprehensively, which was too much for me. I felt that each use deserved their own hearing so that all of the stakeholders could be heard. And so that's what's happening. And um, again, honolulucitycouncil.org backslash Bill 64. Um, I have it broken down by use and the various amendments, but what I'm doing is having my team on October 22nd, you will have a layman's language describing what is in each of these uses.
Thank you, Esther. Yes, Donna?
Are you gonna release it in Ramsar version?
Uh, what is Ramsar version, is that the uh?
Where it's underlined?
No, no, I'm not. Uh, one of the reasons is the whole uh bill is uh uh repeal and replace.
So when, so when you look at it, you won't have, you won't be able to compare existing language with the proposed language?
But what I'm gonna do in my summary is going to be explain everything that is uh being updated. You know, I, I wish uh people have been asking for the whole time, it cannot be done, the whole land use ordinance is being repealed and replaced. And I'm probably not the better person to answer that, that, but that's been asked at all of the hearings. And so I'll be honest with you, I think you need to look at what use you care deeply about. And my, the website that we crafted tells you the exact pages and everything. And if you need, I, I have several attorneys who are helping me. If you need anyone to walk you through what is going on, um, uh, that's what they're there for. We've worked too long um on this that we need to get, to get it to the finish line because if we don't, it's gonna die and it's gonna go back to the planning permission and we're gonna be several years behind in, in updating the landings ordinance.
Thank you, Esther. Any other board members? Any word, any board members online? Any public? Okay, thank you, Esther. Senator Chris Lee? Representative Scott Matoshi? Representative Natalia Hesse-Burdig? Representative Lisa Martin?
Sorry. Aloha, so um this is Stop the Ant Month and I just want to say that here in Kailua, we have had success in Lani Kai, we're more than halfway through. And uh, the ants are not totally wiped out, but they are very close to wiped out. So we'll do our diligence the end of the year. There's been good news and bad news on that front. And the bad news is uh the state legislature did not fund the Hawaii Ant Lab, who does a lot of that work with us. The good news is the Hawaii invasive species council, which is funded by the legislature, gave them the biggest um contract of all the contracts that they gave from their funding. So the Hawaii Ant Lab does have some staff, but there is no expansion of staff um on Awaku, which we really need. However, Castle Foundation um generously funded an entire person to be a community liaison um who is hired through Huyopoolal Poco. So now we have somebody who is focused on Kailua and Waimea Nalo um to help with a lot of the outreach stuff that, to be honest, some of the stuff that I've been doing. That I'm really happy to pass the torch. Um, so, so anyways, that is a fight that we will keep doing, this is um Stop the Ant Lab. If somebody has ants right behind Castle Hospital, a whisk is still there, they will look at your samples, they will see if they're little fire ants, all that is still happening. Um, another thing on invasive species, koki frogs have gone from Waimea Nalo over the hill to Kuleo in Hawaii Kai. Um, there is a plan to use drones to saturate that area with citric acid to try to take out that infestation, which is still quite small relative to the Waimea Nalo infestation. The Waimea Nalo infestation is now enormous. And um, the community has been really upset in Waimea Nalo and has volunteered to help. Uh, the plan is to get uh pumps, a series of stages to get water pressure up the, the very steep um mountain hill there to try to get um, be able to use um citric acid through a water hose and um do a lot more clearing. So there's, that's a project that is uh hopefully gonna ramp up. Uh, the land is community schools land and they have not been involved, but they did give right of entry previously to Department of Agriculture. They just gave a right of entry to DLNR, so now DLNR can take a leadership role on that fight and hopefully we'll still be able to contain it, though I'm not sure. And if anybody has any questions for me, uh, I'm here.
Anybody from the board? Anybody online? Well, Lisa, I'd like to say thank you for all of your hard work and all of your diligence on those little fire ants. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And congratulations on being able to hand off the torch to somebody who can be there and you can move on to other projects. So we appreciate you in this community, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Senator Jared?
Chair, members of the board, community, aloha. When we closed the legislative session, I said the three priorities I was going to try and focus on uh this year during the interim were uh the Red Hill Long-Term Aquifer Mitigation Plan, the property insurance crisis and Hawaiian Electric. That's what we've been working on for most of the, most of the summer. Uh, I'm pleased to report that we begin negotiations with the United States Navy on Monday for a memorandum of understanding that we hope will codify a permanent commitment on behalf, on the part of the Navy uh to mitigate the aquifer contamination that took place uh because of the Red Hill spill. Uh, the fundamental component of that, we are hoping is independent monit, independent uh management uh and monitoring of uh the aquifer uh in the area through a series of wells that we expect the Navy to uh install and uh fund, fund the continued monitoring and operation of. We're fortunate uh to be able to work with the congressional delegation, specifically Senator Hirono, uh who was able to insert a uh to, uh, she inserted language in the National Defense Authorization that requires the Navy to uh engage in this negotiation with us. We're hoping to have it completed by the end of the year, we will see. Uh, on the property insurance uh uh issue, it's, it's very difficult. Uh, the state of Hawaii, the government of the state of Hawaii essentially does not have enough money to enter the market and subsidize the premium spiking that we're seeing in hurricane coverage throughout the state and in condominiums. So uh, we do have a model that was set up after Hurricane Iniki when the property insurers fled the market for about seven years after the hurricane uh to create an insurer of last resort. Uh, as of right now, it seems like that is uh what will be most appropriate and necessary to deal with the crisis. We're hoping that prices stabilize around the world, that the financial markets are figuring out the proper way to account for the increasing incidence of catastrophic natural disasters, not just in the country but around the world. Uh, so that is the plan going forward, it's not uh the plan that people who are hu, seeing huge price spikes in their premiums in townhouses and condominiums are going to want to hear. But we fundamentally don't have enough money in state government to stabilize insurance prices. Um, we can, we can provide gap policies for the small segment of the community that uh cannot find property insurance outside of Lloyds of London or surplus lines, but otherwise we're um, we're trying to move forward on a better, on a better long-term plan. And then Hiko, uh, you folks saw the report yesterday. And then Hiko, uh, you folks saw the report yesterday, um, if, if you're watching the news, some of you might have been following the global settlement that was negotiated. Really, um, you know, and I've been critical of the governor at this body, that he, he really did, uh, play a significant role in making the settlement happen, which although it's going to be a significant amount of money on behalf of the state to, to make the settlement work, I think it is the best thing for everyone involved. It is a monumental achievement if it can survive the legal challenges by the mainland insurers. And so, uh, the next step is to work with Hiko to figure out how they can get their hardening plan, uh, published, financed, and constructed as soon as possible. Happy to talk about, uh, Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle, uh, the HPU Hawaii Loa Campus negotiations, or anything else that anyone else would like to discuss. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Donna?
Okay, I'll ask for, first of all, did DOH, no, um, DOA pass, it passed the rules on invasive species?
No, they have not. They actually postponed their September Board of Agriculture meeting, uh, to finish out the comment, the publication and response to the public comments on the rules, which is the step required before they take it back to the board. I am told, I would have to check, but I'm told that they will hear and take action on the rules at the Board of Agriculture this month. So, yes, and I did not come prepared with, uh, dates on that. So if you would like to participate in that, I would encourage everyone to, you just have to go on the Board of Agriculture's website and we will put information out, um, as soon as we can confirm that the rules will be on the agenda for this month. Once they are approved by the Board of Agriculture, then they go to the governor. Uh, I've made it very clear to the Department of Agriculture that I expect those rules to be published and signed and have the force of law before we get into the legislative session, or I'm going to codify it in law through legislation. And I'm going to call for the resignation of the chair. So.
Okay, one other question. Update on the, on the beetle?
Oh, the beetle, um, the Department of Agriculture has, uh, they sent me an update today because I know that was asked last time. Uh, they expect to have the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Action Plan completed next, uh, on the ninth, which is next week, Wednesday. Uh, it's good and important to have a published plan of action. Uh, the substance of the plan is not going to be great. Uh, there are few, uh, effective strategies to deal with this beetle. We apparently have the hybrid Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle in Hawaii. It's called the Guam strain. Throughout the Pacific, there's a different strain of beetle that is susceptible to a disease that slows them down. I attended a, a Pacific, um, a Pacific Policy Conference in Palau in the Western Pacific in June. It's close to the Philippines and, uh, you can drive around that island, it's about the size of Molokai, and the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle attack the coconut trees there, but it's almost like they're lazy compared to ours. Maybe every fifth tree is really under duress. The rest of them are fine. That's just not the type of beetle we have. If you drive on H1 near Waikeli, you can see they take every single tree down to the pulp. Uh, and we don't have a, an effective strategy to kill the beetles that we have here. The best thing we have going for us right now are netting, uh, to prevent them from getting into the trunks of the trees. And then there's a pesticide treatment that renders the fruit of the tree inedible for a minimum of two years. We'll be working on legislation to require, um, especially public venues like trees near shopping centers or in Waikiki, that if they're treating, they need to properly identify whether the tree has been, uh, administered the pesticide or not.
So also added to that is we, when you see on the side of the road, they're selling coconut water and they sell coconuts. Where are those coconuts coming from? There's an unsuspecting population out there that stops and could get a, um, a poisoned coconut.
So noted. I'll bring that up. One of the things we're expecting from the, the action plan next week is specific guidance on effective treatments because there are some, uh, I'm told there are some treatments being peddled around the island right now that are not effective and could potentially be harmful.
Gary?
Um, we were kicking this around at the Aloha Arborst Association. Um, you know, the coconut trees are famous to have that band around them and for years and years it was just a plain piece of metal. And then some brilliant person came up with an idea of putting Hawaiianana patents on the metal to look them, make them look nicer and the hardware stores sold them and everything. So we were thinking that maybe on any tree that's been treated, that one of those bands could go on the tree. And we were also informed at the same time that those bands' job is to keep the rats from going up in the tree and eating the coconut. So we would like that to continue. So maybe if those plates were made, that they were made with a rough surface so the rats could still get up because the rats now are eating the beetles.
Oh, yeah?
Yes. And so, um, coconut tree climbers are finding, finding this all the time. So, but at a minimum, um, the guys that came here and talked to me, uh, at the last board meeting told me that many mainland people that have thirty, forty, fifty coconut trees on their property are hiring people to trim the coconuts and treat the trees because they're scared. And then, uh, those companies are piling the coconuts on the street and people are buying coconuts that have been poisoned. So we really need to do something about this because we can't have street vendors selling coconut milk to the tourists and then them getting sick or dying. Thank you.
Yeah, so noted. The, there are no regulations on it right now. I actually have a copy and I can send it to the, the board, uh, if you'd like, of the draft signage that the Department of Agriculture is recommending to put on the tree, but it's, um, you know, skull and crossbones stuff to try and, you know, get people's attention and let them know that it's dangerous. Uh, we're, we're negotiating right now whether legislation is necessary to just make it crystal clear. Uh, I don't like to do bills unless we have to, uh, but so noted. And I'll look into the, the people selling the treated coconuts. That's actually pretty scary and anything like that. Thank you.
Tsaia?
Just, um, another thing of awareness is when you poison the trees or the palms, that the flowers, bees love those flowers, so you'll also be killing the bees if it's something that hurts the whole ecosystem. There's something to be aware of when it comes to poison.
I will check on that as well.
Evan?
Great. Um, yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to, um, give him a hallow. Um, I think we have a lot of complaints sometimes in these meetings and, uh, I, I do think it's important to give folks their flowers when they're due and, um, both of our state representatives here have just been huge champions when it comes to biosecurity and some of these invasive species issues. So Brad Martin, um, Senator Keo Koolei on your, for your work on, um, the fire ants and Coconut Rhinoceros Beetles. Thanks for being allies, not just for the Kailua, the windward side, but all of Oahu and the Paiana. Um, I also wanted to give a specific mahalo to you, Senator, for, um, in particular, your work on, um, Hiko, uh, and just to say, for those who, you know, probably everybody saw the report yesterday, uh, or in the last couple of days that showed that Hawaiian Electric, um, according to the county and federal investigators, had responsibility for, um, what happened in Lahaina. And there was a bill going through the legislature last session, um, that would have had the potential to put rate hairs, rate payers on the hook for those damages. And Senator Keo Koolei was one of the only and most important legislators that was standing up to draw the question, concerns about that. And as, as a result of his brave leadership there against a lot of a powerful interest, that bill was ultimately tabled. And I think it was important, um, to have these results and details come out as we figure out our path forward with our electric utility. So I just want to appreciate you for your forward-looking and brave leadership there on behalf of all of us as rate payers.
Thank you.
Donna?
One more question. In your negotiations with the Navy over Red Hill, are you also negotiating that if there are any future spills or current contamination is found, that the Navy pays for it?
We, we are operating, yes. We're operating under the prerogative that the Navy is going to pay for all of it. How, how much of it we can get them to agree to pay for is a different story. And the, uh, I don't want to say the goalposts are moving, but we're starting to understand with greater clarity, uh, how PFAS and its sister chemical PFOS, PFOS, are impacting the aquifer. We're, we're basically measuring for and testing for things in the groundwater that we have not measured and tested for before. And they're turning up now with increasing regularity and it is unclear to us whether they have just been in the water system ubiquitously across the country for who knows how long or whether they are just associated with, uh, uh, you know, the history of spills, uh, around the Navy facilities or whether, uh, as the Board of Water Supply is actively investigating and is quite concerned about, they are actually forward indicators of the fuel plume spreading. And so that is the reason why we are focusing in the negotiations on testing and an independent, uh, third-party manager of the testing, uh, not just facilitating the testing, but making the, you know, uh, distributing the data transparently and guiding, uh, the dialogue on what to make of the, of the, the results of these tests. Uh, again, um, there are atolls and islands across the Pacific that, uh, were subjected to fuel spills during World War II. And there's, uh, a significant amount of data from those places across the Pacific that show that the fuel spills that took place, uh, in World War II have not dissipated. They're still there, uh, in the water table. And so we cannot operate under the assumption that eventually, uh, the petroleum will dissipate. And that is the obligation that we would like to codify on the Navy's, uh, on the part of the Navy going forward.
Carol Miyashiro? Hi, Senator. Knowing how busy you are and since you offered, could you please provide an update on the HPU campus negotiations? Thank you.
Sure, I'm, I, uh, thank you. I met today with, uh, uh, representatives of, of Adventist Health, which, uh, currently own the property and have listed it for sale, uh, with the State Departments of Health and Land and Natural Resources, which are currently the state agencies that are proposing to utilize the facility, uh, if they are able to negotiate a purchase of the property, which we, uh, uh, funded in the legislative budget last year. And with a representative of the Harold Kale Castle Foundation, which owns a, a reversionary right to the property if the property is ultimately, uh, utilized for a non-charitable purpose. Uh, that was the condition that was placed on the property when HPU first purchased it from the Castle Foundation, when, whenever they did. Uh, it's essentially, we are moving toward an agreement. We are not there yet. They're, uh, for the state of Hawaii to take ownership of a piece of property. Uh, we are required to pay fair market value. We are required to do appropriate due diligence on the property, uh, to ensure that what we're taking is what we think it is and, and all of that. So that process is going to take, uh, upwards of eighteen months. In the meantime, um, HPU has vacated the property. It's just sitting empty. No one wants that to continue that way. It's in really good shape. So we are trying to work out a proposal where the state can, uh, potentially move in as a tenant during that due diligence interim so that the building and the facility is operating, uh, while working, moving toward an ultimate acquisition. The hope will be some sort of public health, uh, uh, and conservation usage. The Department of Land and Natural Resources, especially their forestry division, their invasive species guys, the ant lab, uh, they are all short for space and on Oahu, they're essentially just distributed all over the place. They do not have a centralized location. The, the DLNR would like to take a really hard look at whether they can centralize some of their, uh, manpower and equipment on the windward side at the Hawaii Loa Campus, uh, which I think would be a really good thing. Chris Lee's idea.
David?
Thank you, Senator, and, um, uh, appreciate all of what you're doing in the CRB and the Little Fire Ants area. Um, I'm, I'm curious if there's any intention to do anything about these bad actors. Uh, we have, uh, clearly identified, uh, where nursery landscapers are bringing products in from the Big Island, which have the koki frog, the little fire ant. Uh, we also know that the military brought in the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle. These are all very well documented cases and, um, I, we, we've talked about, um, doing something against the bad actors and, uh, just wondering if, if the, there's any intention of actually following through on that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We, uh, pursued Representative Martin and I, uh, and Representative Matoshi, uh, pursued legislation last year to, uh, implement stronger measures of accountability on, uh, the nursery and landscape industry, which we know are a part of the spread, uh, throughout the state. The industry fought and the Department of Agriculture fought, uh, opposed, uh, those measures every step of the way and they were ultimately unsuccessful. Uh, there are, there's a mandate right now in state law and there has been since the nineteen twenties, uh, in HRS Section 151, that requires the Department of Agriculture to take affirmative steps to ensure that, uh, invasive species do not spread through commercial, uh, avenues. And, uh, the, the short of it is that those rule, those mandates need to be executed by the Department of Agriculture through the publication of the rules that Donna, uh, talked about, that we have been calling for, uh, for a year. And from my standpoint, those rules, uh, the departments have, has slow-walked the rules. And, um, uh, as we've gone through and researched nationally, how invasive species are managed throughout the, especially the bigger ag-producing states like Florida, Texas, and California, uh, what's become clear to me is that the rules are absolutely necessary because we don't have a way to hold, uh, actors accountable, not just for bad practices, but just even for, for standard best practices. Uh, they need to do the rules right now. We don't need a bill, uh, to give the Department of Agriculture the ability to hold commercial entities accountable. They just need to self-actualize their statutory mandate, which is why they need to publish the rules so that they can take specific action. Nationally, Hawaii, uh, is considered a backwater in this area because of how aggressive, organized, and, uh, proactive the big ag states are in initiating quarantines when invasive species are detected in their cash crops. Uh, I can tell you right now, California is looking very closely at us because of Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle and the potential harm it could cause to their palm industry, but, you know, a whole lot of other, uh, agricultural crops. We know on the west side of Oahu out in Waianae, CRB, Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle are attacking taro, they're attacking banana, and they're attacking all of the species of palm that are there, not just coconut trees. So, uh, a fundamental element of, uh, an effective invasive species management system is holding, is, is actively regulating commercial operators so that they can track the incursions of new species once they happen. And we haven't had that. And, uh, we're going to get it. We're going to, hopefully sooner rather than later. If everyone could, you know, come to the next Board of Ag meeting and testify, I, I would really appreciate it. I'll get that information out, now that you asked.
Last question. Okay, Donna, last question, but let me remind you, we have two presentations and a board, and a board motion. Okay.
When, um, Castle was going to move over to the- When Castle was going to move over to the HPU property, they did an EIS. So will whoever DLNR or whoever in the state buys the property, does that EIS go with the property? Because it was a really aggressive plan.
Right, the short answer is yes. There's an expectation that if the utilization, there's an expectation that they're going to need to, to do a conservation district use permit. It's a conservation area. And in all likelihood, some of the uses that the Division of Forestry wants to do are going to be considered new and they're going to trigger a new permit. That's the short answer. Well, so the EIS is going to inform the permit.
So I have to do a new one?
I sure hope not.
Okay.
I think the answer is no, but it's an EIS, right? It depends on the utilization.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, thank you, Jared. I appreciate.
Thank you, everyone.
So do we all. All right, moving forward, we have Nicole Gray on behalf of U.S. Representative Jill Takuta.
Hello, Board. Thank you for having me. I'll be brief. I first want to apologize, but we are still working on our monthly written update. It will be distributed to the Board via the Chair once it is completed. But a few things, Rep Takuta has co-led two bills that would support childcare, including a bill to assess the needs of early childcare facilities nationwide and provide grants for constructing or renovating these facilities, and a bill that would create a student loan repayment program for early childhood educators. Rep Takuta's first bill, the Continued Rapid Ohia Death Response Act of 2023, unanimously passed the U.S. House of Representatives. The bill would increase support for continued detection, prevention, and restoration efforts to rapid ohia death, including funding and staff for necessary research. Congress averted a government shutdown and approved a temporary funding extension until December 20th. And the congressional recess this month is, is on us. And Rep Takuta will be engaging in various activities and events throughout the district. I'm happy to take any questions back to our team. If anyone has anything.
Thank you, Nicole. Are there any questions from board members present? Any questions from board members online? Doesn't look like it. Thank you so much, Nicole. Have a good evening.
You too.
Moving along to our presentations, our first presentation this evening is the Keolu Drive Complete Streets Project by Rene Espio.
Thank you, Chair Lau, members of the Board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. My name's Rene Espio. I'm the Complete Streets Administrator for City and County of Honolulu. And thank you to whoever is online pulling up my presentation. Maybe a couple of quick responses to topics that came up earlier in the meeting. On the Mokapu Kalahale Roundabout, this was a concept that was developed years ago when we looked at many of the big corridors in Kailua. I believe it's actually state jurisdiction. So we've talked to the state sort of in passing about it. They don't see any priority to advance the project. We don't really either at this time. Maybe the next time we pave it. We also have a walkway project that I'm going to share on Kalahale. If there were improvements that we wanted to do to that intersection as part of that project, we can explore that, but it's not a funded project at this time. I also wanted to just make a general mention. You know, striping is a constant challenge for us across the island, keeping our crosswalks visible and in good repair. If you see a specific location, I just want to remind everybody that 311 is a great resource for calling attention to things on city facilities that need maintenance attention. So I use it myself. We actually, staff use that as well. So just wanted to remind people, and we really love photos, and specific locations are always helpful. Okay, so tonight I wanted to share an update on a new project that we've started, a new planning effort within the city. And we invite you guys to come to a community meeting later this month where we can talk about it in a bit more detail. So we are starting to look in Enchanted Lake. Most of our work traditionally has sort of been in the beach area, Coconut Grove. And yet, you know, we also have an Enchanted Lake community that is asking for some of the same bike lane improvements and things that they're seeing sort of in other parts like Kailua. So we're excited to get over to that part of town. Next slide, I think most of you are familiar with what Complete Streets is. It's basically a roadway design approach that says that we have to consider everyone using our streets, not just drivers. And, you know, in busy urban areas, streets are not just for transportation either, right? That's where you know, where you talk to your neighbors. It's where you enter businesses, have parades, celebrations. So this is sort of the general approach we bring to all of our projects. Next slide summarizes the City and County of Honolulu's Complete Streets Law. So in 2012, we actually adopted this, not as a policy of the city, but actually as an ordinance of the city. And what it says is basically, every project that we have that touches a street, we shall incorporate Complete Streets features. Much easier said than done. This is why we're always coming to talk to you guys in the community to figure out how best to do that, because obviously it's different in every community. Next slide, you know, just a quick update on some of the other projects. The next few slides go through the Roundabout Project. I think we can skip through that now that Kelly's already provided her update. So skip through this one. And then this is the detour for Phase Five and Seven. I'm sure all of this information is on the project website. The next project is something that we probably haven't talked about for a few years. Like I said, we did Complete Streets planning for many of the major corridors in Kailua years ago at a high level. We were able to identify these three corridors that we had worked on as being eligible for federal funding for pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So we have that picture right there is Kalahale Avenue. And it shows a zoom-in concept of a new two-way sort of path, pedestrian bicycle path, on the Makai side of the roadway. So right now, you know, we have sort of four shoulders on both sides. This concept sort of shifts the center line over a little bit to be able to do a full improved path on at least one side of the street, since we have very heavy use there. So there's similar concepts like that developed for the streets you see in red. But we're excited to announce that we are in procurement for a design consultant on this. This is going to be a long, slow federal aid project. I don't want anyone to get too excited. This is coming soon. I'm sure everyone will hopefully forget about the roundabout construction pain by the time we even get close to moving this into construction. But just wanted to let you know that these ideas are moving ahead. And we will come back at the appropriate time to get more feedback on those. And then that brings us to Keolu Drive, which is our new project. So, you know, I think we're all familiar with Keolu Drive. This is actually the road diet section. This used to be a four-lane street. The last time we rehabilitated the road, almost 20 years ago, we went down to a three-lane cross-section because of safety concerns and speeding concerns. We were, of course, able to get some bike facilities in as part of that project. We have learned a lot about bike facility design since then. This is definitely not best practice on how you encourage kids and kupuna to safely cycle in their community. And so we're excited to take another look at this street. We're still seeing issues we want to address, and we are very interested in what the community wants to see as well. So next few slides get real specific into what we're looking at. Okay, so the purpose of this study is really to look at Keolu Drive. I almost want to brand this project like the loop or something. So improving circulation within Enchanted Lake. But also we're looking at KIS too, and how to get kids safely between Enchanted Lake and KIS. So those are the main purposes. Next slide, we'll show you the map. So mostly Keolu Drive and the entire length of it. But we also included Vana'au and then sort of the back way, you know, the cut-through bike path that brings you back to Keolu Drive as part of this study. Because we do really realize that those are important corridors for our keiki and as well as people getting to and from the beach between Enchanted Lake. We are looking at, you know, your typical menu of Complete Streets improvements, including bike upgrades, traffic calming. We do have some serious speeding issues out here that we want to address. Pedestrian crossing improvements are obviously always foremost. Walkway upgrades in some places at Vana'au, you know, the turn there with the blinking light. I mean, I just gives me stress going through there. I'm seeing people in wheelchairs trying to share that narrow travel lane with cars, for example, and baby strollers. And then a part of, we always look at, you know, changing lane configurations to get safer driver behavior. Safety, next slide shows some of our safety concerns. I don't think I need to remind folks of some of the recent fatalities that we've had on Keolu Drive. We understand this is an important priority for the community, and we're excited to finally be getting going. And we'll share more details on all of this later when we have more time. I can also share, or you guys have the PDF of the presentation. I think it's been uploaded too. So if you want more of the details, we have done a fair amount of data collection and analysis at this point. We don't have proposals per se, but we have looked at data and we know kind of what we think might help some of the safety problems and what we think is feasible. So we're excited to start to get community feedback so we can move towards developing a plan. The next slide I think is sort of the, you know, just some of the reality check here about what's going on in this corridor. I mean, we have people driving freeway speeds past single-family homes. You know, we have literally hundreds and hundreds of children. They go to school there every day. We have some pretty incompatible activities going on out there we hope to address. The next, you know, few slides kind of flip through sort of our general approach and what we're going to bring to the project. We all know, of course, that the speed at which a car is driving is directly related, in fact, exponentially related to the chance that you're going to survive a crash if you're a pedestrian and that car hits you. We are learning sort of that there's a sweet spot kind of right around 2025. If someone gets hit at that speed, there's a pretty high chance that they're going to be okay. We're not going to have life-altering outcomes. Once we start getting the speeds that we see on the corridor, pretty typically around 40, 45, that's where crashes become fatal, particularly when we're talking about kupuna. And I'm, you know, envisioning the memorial that is out on Keolu Drive right now for the same instance. Our two basic principles for Complete Streets are, one, people not driving need dedicated space. People walking and biking are never going to win sharing space with cars. And two, the cars that are driving that corridor need to be going slow enough. So if accidents happen, they don't have irreversible outcomes. So those are kind of our two main principles. The next slide, flip through some of the tools we're going to be looking at as part of this project, looking more at protected bike facilities. I know there's lots of controversy about Hamakua Drive and sort of flipping, you know, the parking and the bike lane. But I see kids using this every day. And you know what? As a parent, I would feel much more comfortable with my kid riding there than I would the bike lanes that are currently out on Keolu. And we have different ways we can protect these bike lanes. Next slides, we're going to be looking at, you know, one way and we're going to be looking at some two-way configurations. Unfortunately, the right-of-way is not consistent along Keolu, right? We have that kind of older residential section where it's really narrow. We may need to go, like the next slide shows, to maybe a two-way bikeway to save some space in order to do a fully connected facility around the loop. And luckily, we've got, you know, a growing body of experience with this stuff in town. And then the next slide. This is who we're trying to design for. I don't need to preach to Kailua about this because I love that Kailua is a bicycling community and wants to be bike-friendly. But I would say the facilities out there are really designed for a very small percentage of people who feel comfortable riding in traffic. We're trying to get to that, like 42% of people, right? Who are like interested but terrified. That's really our goal. Keep going. We also know that where we put in better bike facilities, we raise driver awareness and pedestrian crashes go down. So we're hoping we can just get better behavior in general out there by improving some of our facilities. And then the last few slides show also some of our pedestrian tools that we think we can expand use of in the corridor. You know, we're all familiar with these little islands. They really simplify crossings, make it a lot safer for particularly like kids and people with not the best judgment to help cross the street. And we've got some good local examples already. And then the next slide shows some curb extensions that we can also do sort of on the sides. We have some very wide intersections on Keolu Drive and some of the crossings are very long. And then we have, of course, I'm just flipping through slides so I can finish this. And of course, raised crosswalks, speed humps, roundabouts, circles. I mean, those are all kind of in our toolbox for things that we can talk about in this area. And then finally, the sort of next-to-last slide, the real reason I'm here is to provide details on our first community workshop. We're going to do it the evening of October 24th at 6:00 PM at Kailepulu Elementary School. This is our first in-person meeting in many years in Kailua. So we're excited to come and have conversations with the community about what they, you know, think is working or not working and what they would like to see out there. So here's the information. We'll have a sort of formal presentation and then we'll have the, some of the plan, ideas and boards around and can have kind of a tough story with people as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board? Oh, of course. Donna.
Okay, first of all, can you send a copy of your presentation?
I already got it.
Donna.
The bill.
The presentation has already been uploaded to the Google Drive for every board member.
Okay, great. And so second, when you plan your bike lanes, are you going to be taking away parking spaces?
I think it depends on where. In the very, there's sort of three different sections of Keolu Drive. There's the really wide section where I was saying we went from four lanes to three lanes. We have so much space there, like, I mean, we can have everything we want. We can have trees, we can have parking turned this way. I mean, we could, you know. The narrow residential section, I understand that on-street parking is super important for that community because I live, I live in that community. I would, all of our proposals preserve it on at least one side. Only on one side. If you want a bike facility through that section, something has to go. So that's where we were kind of looking at, maybe we could do a two-way on one side to save space and then provide parking on the other side. And maybe we could do some traffic calming to make it easier for those people to cross. I know there's cars, hit cars there all the time and, and people are speeding. So that's the trade-off. We're not really proposing it at this point, but anything with the street has a direct trade-off. And then in the commercial section, I think we are proposing to reduce parking because there are visibility challenges getting in and out of driveways. And we don't think that parking is quite as necessary. But we understand the sensitivity in the residential area for sure. And I do plan to personally walk and canvas every single one of those homes myself.
Hey, Gary.
It's always hard to have questions when, when these presentations happen. So these are just ones I thought about in the last few minutes, okay? In your numbers there, are you including the e-bikes? And what do you call non-e-bikes anymore? Human bikes or propelled or, how do you designate the two? Because we're seeing an awful lot of accidents with e-bikes. We're seeing that the state legislation might have to start coming up with better laws for e-bikes. In my neighborhood along the other night, a police officer followed an e-bike for half a mile because they couldn't stop them. It had the driver, his girlfriend, and a baby. And the law states only one person to a bicycle, but it's very unclear whether an e-bike is a bicycle. So law enforcement is very confused right now. If you go to YouTube tonight and you Google, how do I make my e-bike go 90 miles an hour? There are kits for $300 to take your bike up to those kinds of speeds, and we're not even thinking about them. So I'm very concerned we're now going to create a path, you know, of e-bikes. What's going to be the procedure of them passing each other? What's the rules of the road? All the things that we had to learn how to do when we were driving. What's going to be these future bicycles? You know, there's not that much of a problem of normal bicycles because they never had those kinds of speeds. And even normal bicycles, I see all the Japanese And even normal bicycles, I see all the Japanese tourists that come over here, they're all confused about all of our laws. And I can tell you right now, if I went to any high school over here and asked them, "Are you supposed to get off your bicycle and walk it across the walkway?", they're probably not one of them would say yes. Okay, so that's one thing I'm concerned that you're not planning. Your pictures up there of these other communities. In our case, everything you do will be a reconstruction, so to speak. Are any of those pictures of other communities where they planned it out from scratch? So you're, you're showing us pictures of a planned community versus what you're going to do here in Hawaii, which is take roads that were never designed to have these goodies on them? So that's something. And the next thing is, are you taking consideration evacuation plans when you come up with these complete street plans? It's already where one of the worst places in the United States for evacuating the population from certain areas around the island. There are so many places where there's only one way in and one way out. So just a few questions I got from your presentation. Thank you.
Good questions. E-bikes, a very, very timely topic. Our Director of Transportation Services at City and County has recently convened a working group of HPD, EMS, our Customer Services Department, transportation folks at the state and the county to talk about these regulations. So we actually had our first meeting today, this afternoon. And we all agreed that these are, that these innovations and technologies are something that we want to harness and we want to take advantage of and we want to encourage in our community as we look for more efficient and more affordable means of transportation. But it is completely lawless right now. So we came up with an agenda of issues we want to address. I will say, just as, you know, a little sampler teaser, helmets came up first for youth in particular. And then it started like rules, definition, classification of these vehicles, licensing requirements, where they can be ridden on sidewalks, you know, bike lanes path. So I don't have the answers yet, but we understand the need 100%. And we are jumping into what we have agency over. Understanding a lot of this is probably in HRS and under state kuliana, but at least the smaller devices do seem to be under city jurisdiction. So rest assured, we are finally starting to get organized and talk about this and learn from other states and what they're doing. So thank you for calling attention to that.
One more thing. The government's Community Service Committee, and before I took over the committee, we had a Japanese police officer come from Japan because so many Japanese tourists were getting hurt over here. Because we don't enforce bike laws at all, so it's like a free-for-all. In Japan, you need a license to own a bicycle, a driver's license. Number two, all bicycles are registered, all bicycles have insurance. And your first violation of the law is $100. The next time they take your license away and confiscate your bike and you can never have one again. So until I see these kinds of rules come about that we're dealing with these problems. I was driving in Kailua and I don't drive around very much, I'm 73. And when I see electrical bikes flying down the road, just on the back tire, exhibiting their wonderful abilities to do acrobatics on bikes, I get very pissed.
There's many reactions that that behavior elicits and that's one of them.
Not just blaming you, I'm just telling you.
It's not my fault at all. Yeah, I'm not taking any blame for e-motorcycle use. But we do recognize that it is an issue. They are different, they are electric motorcycles, they're not electric bikes. But we do plan to address both categories of vices. Yes?
Renee, we have a board member on line. Kate, Kate Ryder?
Just really quick, is there any consideration of connecting Enchanted Lakes with the Pohakapu community through the Kailua High School connection?
I'm not, I think the state is, I think Chris Lee has got some master plans for connecting all kinds of state facilities with off-street paths. So I would sort of defer to, I think, the state on that. The city is pretty land poor, to be honest. We own like streets and very narrow right-of-ways, generally speaking. So, great idea, we'd be happy to connect up with it somehow where it hits a city street. But generally, we don't have a lot of resources for like off-street paths and things because we just don't own the land and we just don't have the money. Okay? Thank you. But good idea, I love the idea. And we'd connect to better facilities on Keolu as well.
Evan Weber?
Mahalo Jade. Yeah, and mahalo to you Renee for coming, really appreciate it. First, a quick clarification question. The October Ka'alepulu meeting, is that specific to Keolu Complete Streets or is that for all of Kailua?
Just Keolu, the map I showed, Keolu, Vana'ao and that kind of like.
Okay, so it's for feedback on that?
Thing stuck on, yeah.
In particular?
Yeah, it's a federal aid project, so the corridors are pretty specifically defined at this point, depending on eligibility.
Okay, awesome. Great, I did have a couple of other questions, or actually just one mainly. Yeah, super do appreciate you being here, it's always a pleasure. Also want to take the opportunity to just say how great this work is and remind everyone present that the vast majority of traffic accidents and safety issues have to do with cars on our streets. So it's really great that you are making more space for pedestrians and bicyclists and all of that. And that should be our focus in terms of health and safety of the community is, is the cars. But with that, following up on my earlier thing on the Kalahaeo projects that you also referenced during your presentation, I do just want some clarity. So, and I want to pass along what I've been hearing from my constituents and then also just get some clarity on it. So what I've been hearing from my constituents is Kalahaeo, the actual South Kalahaeo Drive, that street, everyone in Kailua knows it's kind of a disaster as far as safety for pedestrians and bikers is one of our main thoroughfares. And the sidewalks and bike lane in heavy quotation marks that is there, that's a huge priority, I think, for the community. And I hear it a lot from families that live in the area, people with small children walking their strollers, bicyclists who, you know, try to use Kailua as much as possible, but sometimes you got to be on Kalahaeo, right? And then this roundabout thing, it is on your website. So I, so I just wanted to pull that out. And it's kind of like when you look at Kalahaeo improvements, the first thing you see is the roundabout. So, so I'm not like, I didn't just make this up, okay? And, and I just want to say like, that, that to me does not seem like the priority as far as safety. There are issues on Mokapu in terms of speeding and everything like that, but I'm not sure that the roundabout will improve that. If anything, it's going to make traffic go faster between Kalahaeo and Mokapu, right? That's kind of the point of roundabouts. So as far as safety is concerned, I just want to give the feedback that I've been hearing from the community that that should be like the last priority from all this stuff that you presented. And like, just kind of maybe X that off completely if you can.
Focus on the path.
Yes, focus on bike and pedestrian on Kalahaeo and the safety concerns on Mokapu, particularly as it relates to students. And yeah, if you have anything to, my question is, is there any clarification on the timeline of those different priorities?
Like I said, Kalahaeo is a, it's a federally aided project at starting preliminary engineering one. It takes about a year and a half or so. It's to go through full environmental, federal environmental clearance, which is, given the history of EV in Kailua, probably not going to be the quickest project. And then there's another design phase after that for about a year to do like, you know, all the, press your Ts and dot your Is on the construction plans. And then you look for money and then you bid it out. So I mean, we're, you know, years away, at least. We have been talking about some near-term things that we could do. One simple thing we've started, we're reducing the speed limit on Kalahaeo. I don't know if you've gotten a notification of that. If you haven't, you will soon to 25. I know it probably won't accomplish too much, but it does help. And then, you know, we could always look at maybe some other speed mitigation in the near term, just to get the driver speeds down. Because I, I have also had some near misses on Kalahaeo and it's because the drivers are going too fast.
So here's the thing, people. If we can get through one more presentation, we can move on to our individual motion that addresses just that, our assistance in helping to lower the speed limits. So if we have, we have. No other questions? Yes, Ms. Lisa Martin?
So, so a little bit of background. Representative has been asking, has been talking to state DOT about helping put in some raised crosswalks near Ka'alepulu Elementary. We also did some speed enforcement near Keolu Elementary. And HPD was pretty concerned about the speeds they were seeing and they recommended we do something there as well. And given that it's more of an equity population, we thought we should do something for both and not just advance one. So we just, like in the last few weeks, I think, agreed on the location of those temporary installations near Ka'alepulu, it would be a raised crosswalk near where the recent fatality was. And then there would be probably two speed humps near the other crosswalk because there's no curb ramps, so we can't do a raised crosswalk there. And then near Keolu Elementary, near the park there in the skate park, I think we have a series of maybe three humps, just to get people to slow down as they're kind of coming off the highway and flying down the hill there. We probably will share that, I think, on the 24th with the community. HDOT is a little backed up on their installation. We have a few other communities requests that are ahead and we've been waiting a while for those. So I don't think they're quite ready, but we're catching up and should have the request out pretty soon. But we have to send it to DCA. HDOT, we have had other communities that, yeah, yes. I understand, but we have other communities that are asking for the same thing. And we, and those that we put forward, because the plans were done a long time ago, they still haven't gotten to them. So there's just seems to be a backup in the county requests. I don't know if they're on. Well, we just finished design, I mean, we literally just finished our conversations on this like a week or two ago. So there's no point in bugging someone if we're not ready. And we have to submit it for disability review still as well.
So it is moving forward.
It is moving forward. And the beauty is that this is something that we will see, you know, in the next reasonable time period. Unlike some of these, you know, bigger plans, I mean, those are, those are long-term.
Like our stoplight on Kulei Road and Alike. Okay, any other questions on complete streets? No, thank you so much for all of your information. I appreciate you and so does this neighborhood board. All right, moving on. Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Ko'olapoko Community Resilience Project by Mr. Colin Lee, UH Climate and Resilience Collaborative. Thank you.
Aloha, Ch'ala, members of the neighborhood board. I'm your final presentation for the night, so I really appreciate you guys sticking around. To clarify, I am not from the Marine Corps Base. I, we'll talk more about the project shortly, but my name is Colin Lee. I'm a researcher and attorney at University of Hawaii Climate Resilience Collaborative. And we, I'm here to present tonight on a project that we're doing in collaboration with the Marine Corps Base over the Sogan County Office of Time Change Sustainability and Resilience. Also very happy to be here, I grew, was born and raised here in Kailua. Went to school just across the park there. My parents live on Kalahaeo, I'm being, I just came from dinner with them. I don't think my mom was watching, am I, so? Before, I think Kristy Kalahiva from the Marine Corps Base also shared, I have a flyer with me here that I, that I printed out a bunch of them. And I also have some of our, our research groups and a report, which actually have Kailua Bay on the front. A few years ago, we were approached by the Department of Defense Office of Global Defense Community Cooperation, which is a sub-agency of the Department of Defense, they used to be called the Office of Economic Adjustment. They have this federal grant funding program called the Installation Resilience Program. The Installation Resilience Program funds planning and actual projects in communities adjacent to the defense facilities of, for this, for this project, that facility is Marine Corps Base Hawaii. So essentially, this is an, this was, we saw this as an opportunity to take federal money and use it to promote some of our research in Ko'olapoko. So all of the research has been done outside of Marine Corps Base in the community of Ko'olapoko, which is from Kualua to Wa Manalo, so like the head of Ma'fu. There is actually a distinction about where Ko'olapoko Ma'fu ends. So, anyway, you, you may be familiar with some of our research if you've ever seen the Voice Sea level rise viewer. We have a team, I work with a team of scientists who model the impacts of climate change, primarily those that are driven by sea level rise, things like passive flooding, chronic erosion, coastal erosion, highway runoff and some other additional sea level rise-driven impacts. So the project, the reason I'm here for you tonight is because as a part of the project, we've convened two, two stakeholder groups. One of them is a steering committee, which is, which includes some policymakers at the state level, at the local level, local community leaders, some of the neighborhood board members as well. And we also have a technical advisory committee, which is a group of, of technical specialists, professionals in, in certain fields. And we also have another member in that committee in the room as well. And I'm here because we want also feedback from the community. On the flyer, I think it was, I think Kristy sent it to someone, but there's, there's two QR codes. One of them is to a Google form and then the second one is to a, our online geographical information systems viewer, GIS, which is, you know, like a map that you can go through and click on different types of sea level rise impacts. And the, the purpose again of me being here is because we want to hear from the community about whether or not our projected impacts of climate change track what you, what we experienced here in Ko'olapoko. So for instance, you know, one of the, one of the layers there, so back up a little bit. We have, we've, we've modeled these impacts in the primary river in town. And now we're trying to, we've been trying to figure out ways to fund this research throughout the rest of the island and then the rest of the state as well. So coming back, you know, for example, we, we model compound flooding and rainfall. And when it rains, I mean, this is a very simplified question that I'm asking, but essentially what we're asking is if people have time to take a look at the viewer, click on all of the impacts and various layers of infrastructure like electric, water, transportation infrastructure, so roads, and, and see, you know, hey, it rained really hard a couple of weeks ago and that place was just really flooded, but on the viewer, it doesn't show any, any sort of impact from rising sea levels and, and, and where passive flooding will flood areas when it rains really hard. A really important driving factor of how climate change is going to impact Ko'olapoko, which is a really low-lying area, Kailua especially, is that the ocean is hydrologically connected to the groundwater table. So as the ocean rises, groundwater tables come up too. And this becomes really important when we're talking about all of these long-term projects because all of the varied infrastructure is not, is generally not built to be able to withstand uplift. It's, you know, it's built to be able to withstand cars on top of it, but saltwater intrusion from below and the groundwater table from below really does have these impacts. And growing up here, I mean, I remember many times that Kalahaeo was closed because of the water main breaks. And that's, you know, I can't say directly about each individual, what it was just caused by that, but if we don't plan properly and we're not cognizant of what these impacts may have on our infrastructure, then that's going to be a huge issue moving forward. Sea level rise, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC has projected that sea level rise is going to continue for centuries to millennia, regardless of whether or not humans stop the carbon emissions. And that's the whole thing we can get into, but the reality is, is we need to be prepared and we have our infrastructure prepared for future. And so I don't want to take, I'm very happy to take questions, but there should be plenty of information on this flyer and I'm also, I'll also leave my contact information with some numbers of the board. So if community members and board members want to reach out and also take a look at the viewer, fill out the Google form, there's even an option to provide pictures. So the next time it rains, maybe if you're, take a picture of it, you know, I mean, that's literal verification of, of the science and the projections that we're doing. literal verification of, of the science and the projections that we're doing. And some important things to note on the viewer, you'll see on the left-hand side, there's increments in, in one-foot increments of sea level rise, so, you know, as I was saying, if you have a, if you have a mean high tide walk, mean high water level, and you're at high tide and it rains six inches plus, you know, in X amount of years, there's two feet of sea level rise, you'll see what these projections show for various type, various type of impact. Or you can layer it all on top of each other, and we have layers in there from various municipal and other infrastructure, so you can see where, where water mains. All, all of our infrastructure, drainage infrastructure relies on gravity, and if at some point there's this critical turning point where gravity is not going to, it's not going to drain because the sea level is going to be at the same, same height, and water, I mean, it's like what we see in, in Ibele and Makupun area, where you see water, most of the water coming out of the storm drains, that's, that's what we need to be prepared for. And it happens in Waikiki and it's going to continue happening. Last week, you guys probably saw a house fell onto the beach on the North Shore, and that's happened a couple of times in the last few years. And yeah, so this is, I'm, I'm not a scientist by training, I'm a, I'm an attorney again, I focus on marine coastal policy, but uh, yeah, very happy to be here and appreciate you folks giving me the time to, you know, play with me.
Thank you, Colin. Wait, don't move yet. Any, any other board members? Nope. Carol.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I, I, I'm the Chair of the Public Safety, Public Health, Civil Defense Subcommittee of the Kailua Neighborhood Board. So I think we would definitely be interested in having future conversations with you to see how we can work together to be better prepared for that disaster that's not a matter of if it's going to happen, but when. And so we also have subcommittee meetings the second Thursday of every month here at the district park over by the gymnasium, and it's from 7:00 to 7:45. So I will give you my phone number, we can keep in contact, but I think a small group setting might be more conducive to kind of brainstorming and getting to know what you can do and what we can do together. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. One additional thing that I wanted to mention is that one of the additional primary purposes of this particular project, which is a research and planning project, is, you know, later, and for those of us who are applied for federal grants, this is really good catalyst to be able to say, hey, this research was done, or, or any sort of funding mechanism, this research was done, this is a really critical area, this is really critical for the community for, you know, emergency access routes for critical infrastructures like a power supply station. And taking this and using it to figure out how to fund these infrastructure improvement projects from a variety of other funders, but I appreciate that offer up, the effort of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, Colin?
I also wanted to mention that our research group's director was a former member of this board for a long time, his name's Dr. Chip Fletcher. He's also lived in Kailua for, I think, 40 years now, and he used to serve in the neighborhood as well.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'll leave you.
Just super quick, in, in that vein, that same night, there is also the Kailua Water Quality Meetings, and from a water quality angle, the Chair of that, who's also the Vice Chair of the Neighborhood Board, Levani Lipton, has been helping orchestrate a lot of the same kind of citizen science stuff that you are looking for and has a litany of pictures and documentation, so she's not here tonight because of family reasons, but please do come on those Thursday meetings, and I can give you her contact info as well to connect with her directly.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Seeing that we have no hands raised online and everybody on the board, thank you so much, Colin, we appreciate you taking the time to explain your project. All right, moving along to board business, we have one individual motion. Do we have somebody who would like to make this motion? Bill Hicks online.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Travis Council, Chair of our Transportation Committee, had intended to introduce this individual motion, but at 7:02 this evening, got the email that he was a last-minute scratch for attendance tonight, and Councilmember Kiaaina had mentioned that this is coming up at a city council meeting on October 22nd, so I don't usually make individual motions, but I will in this case. The Kailua Neighborhood Board supports Bill 44 of 2024 to establish a 20 mile per hour speed classification and designate 20 mile per hour limits in school zones. This support aligns with our May motion requesting traffic safety improvements across our community, especially in school zones, and I would also, in introducing this motion, just to reach back to one of the slides that Renee included in her Complete Street presentation, which is the slide that showed that in the event of a vehicle pedestrian collision at 30 miles per hour, the likelihood of it being fatal is 50%, and at 20 miles per hour, the likelihood of fatality is 10%. So modernizing to include a 20 mile per hour speed zone and make that the default for school zones is the intent of Bill 44, and that's the basis of this individual motion, which now requires a second. Mahalo.
Thank you. Do we have a second from anybody?
I second it.
Thank you, Carol. Carol seconds. Is there any needed discussion on this bill? Anybody? Anybody? Okay, seeing that we have no need for discussion, it will be a roll call vote, starting with Josiah Akow.
Aye.
Josiah votes aye. Travis Council. Jeff Klein. Bill Hicks.
Aye.
Bill Hicks votes aye. Kelly Ann Kobayashi. David Lieha.
Aye.
David votes aye. Michael Lee.
Aye.
Michael votes aye. Levani Lipton.
Aye.
Levani votes aye. Carol Mioshiro.
Aye.
Carol votes aye. Kayla Morale. Kate Ryder. Claudine Tomassa.
Aye.
Claudine votes aye. Steve Trecker. Steve Trecker votes aye. Evan Weber. Evan Weber votes aye. Gary Weller. Gary Weller votes aye. John White. Donna Wong. Donna Wong abstains. Jeff Zuckerneck. Jeff, was that an aye?
Aye, aye to the aye.
Thank you, Jeff votes aye, and Chair Jade Lau also votes aye. This motion passes with 11 votes. Thank you all. Travis will be really happy. All right, moving along, approval of minutes from Thursday, September 5th, our regular meeting minute. Does anybody have any corrections? Any conversation necessary, any, any? Any objections, that's the word? Having no objections, our minutes carry forward and are approved. Moving along to committee reports, Executive Committee Chair Bill Hicks, anything to add?
Uh, no, thank you.
Apparently I don't need to go through all of them, I can just ask, does anybody have anything to report from their committees? Hearing that nobody has anything to report, do we have anybody that wants to make a membership motion and change their committee or join a committee? Hearing nothing, we can move along. The Chairs Report Committee Agendas for November 2024 are due to the Chair by Sunday, October 27th of 2024. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I have something. I was wondering if we could make a committee that has to do with Hawaiian culture in this community.
That's a.
So just, we don't have to do it here.
That's a really good question, Josiah.
Just something for us to all think about.
I will make sure that we get that message to our regular Chair, Bill Hicks, to figure out how we need to look at adding a committee for cultural information, cultural advancement. Anything else? The moment I've waited for all night, this meeting is adjourned.